Okay, thank you for coming tonight. Tonight is Wednesday, February 5th for the City of Kingsburg's regular city council meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started. So, welcome for tonight's February 5th Kingsburg City Council meeting. We're gonna start tonight with an invocation from Pastor Clayton Paul from the Hope Kingsburg Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand.
Good evening. Let's pray. God, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather. God, we're grateful for the opportunity to provide leadership and guidance and direction for this city of Kingsburg. God, thank you for each one of these council members and for the many others in the city who provide leadership and direction and vision. God, I pray that this evening's meeting would be, would be full of listening and grace and compassion. God, I pray that there will be wisdom and clarity. God, that these leaders would continue to do what is in the best interests of Kingsburg and beyond. And so, God bless this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We're gonna call this meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. First up, we have approval of tonight's agenda. Entertain motions for that.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under presentations and informational reports, we have none, so we will move along to public comment for tonight. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda for this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any members from the public that would like to come up and speak tonight? Come on up if you want. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation action from staff and shall be acted on in one motion by council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For tonight, we have consent items one through eight. Do we have any members of council that would like to pull any consent items? Seeing none from council, do we have any members of staff or the public that would like to pull any items from consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar passes. We'll move on to item nine, which is our growth management allocation. This is consideration of the second round of allocations. Staff report by Community Development Director Holly Owen. What? Hi, Holly.
Thank you. Almost missed my call there. We go quick to item nine. Good evening, Mayor Purcell and council and community members. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. The action requested tonight's not to evaluate any particular project. No applications have been submitted in this particular round of allocations. This is the second round of allocations, which is called out in the growth management ordinance to be done at first meeting in February for council. It's not a requirement for council action at this time, but only if council chooses to do so, as stated in the growth management ordinance, which the passage is in your staff report. Just a little background, the first round of 2024 allocation units were awarded to West Star Construction with 80 units, and another 25 units were awarded from the 2025 allocation allotment per council discretion. The first round for 2025 opened in September of 2024. Lot of dates here, but this is how this is done. And Joseph Crown Construction Development was awarded some units. There was 44 at the time. So, at this time, there are 11 single-family residential units remaining in the 2025 allocation allotment, as shown in your spreadsheet in your staff report. Just so you know, staff has met with several developers in the last nine months who are interested in single-family subdivision approval. They, both these projects will need long, there's a long entitlement process. They need annexation to the city, and neither developer has submitted for allocations at this time. As mentioned above, there's 11 units remain out of the total allocation units for 2025. They would need to go through that allocation process. That means they submit at a particular time. There's a date certain that the planner, the planning department needs to receive that. It's very specific, the calendar is very specific in the ordinance. So, you, at this point, are at your first meeting in February. That's when you would potentially open a second round of allocations. The applications would, the period would open and continue to March 31st. City staff would, at that time, perform rating and ranking process during the month of April, and then the first meeting of Planning Commission in May would be when that would be considered, and then council would review the Planning Commission decision in their, in your first meeting in June. So, the next potential allocations for 2026 would be available for review by application to the Planning and Development Department with a deadline of this coming September 30th. So, there's this period, and then there's, there's the summer, and then you can apply anytime, really, but the deadline is September 30th of this year. Staff's recommendation at this time is given the limited allocations remaining. We don't really believe it's imperative to open the second round of allocations for 2025, but we seek direction regarding the opening of that second competitive allocation process. That concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Holly. Council discussion or questions for Holly?
Quick, quick question. So, I was contacted by a gentleman that is interested in some allotments, and I'm, I am confused because it sounded like, from our discussion, that if they do not have allocate, any, any allocations, even one, that the project will kind of come to a halt until they do receive allocations?
That's, that's partly true. I mean, they, they can't really receive, you know, the next step of, they can't, that's the start of applying for a building permit. So, they, they would be able to do at-risk some work, but, you know, at some point, you know, that becomes, you know, a bit, a bit of a gamble for them because if they don't have allocations, you know, there's not, there's not a guarantee that they have a particular timeframe that they can take action on what is ultimately a financial decision. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, they could, they could apply for allocations, but, you know, it's, it is, it is an at-risk situation. And Alex, if you have any comments on that, please jump in and correct me.
I think you handled that beautifully.
Thank you. Love to hear that. The boss says that.
Can I answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
So, opening up the second round is for only 11?
At this time, yes.
And if we don't?
So, you think of it as a pot that gets refilled, a bucket, and so the bucket will be refilled as of September for that 80 single-family, 35 multi-family, and then, you know, then you go from there. But right now, 11 remain from the actions that occurred before, and that was West Star, you know, with their, with their big ask of 80, and then they, you know, they had 25 that they came back for, and then Joseph Crown Construction asked for 44, and so that, you know, that took the, that took the available units at this point down to, to 11.
So, if we don't open up a second round right now, those 11 will just roll into the September?
The rolling is up to council. We have had rolling in the past. We don't necessarily have to roll that. That's, that's completely, at council discretion. So, that's, that's, that's the short answer.
11 just doesn't seem like a lot for a developer to?
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Come on up. Will you come up if you could, just state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Kingsburg? Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Nick Peters. I represent San Joaquin Valley Homes. One of the builders is looking for some allocations. I live in Reedley, California. So, I just wanted to come up here and ask you guys to consider opening up the allocations. From the way that I understand the ordinance, we need at least one allocation to continue our entitlement process. The project that we're working on right now is scheduled to hit later this year, and then we're hoping to have it through this year and then probably begin construction next year. So, it has to do with just trying to make sure that we've, we're hitting all the wickets that we need to hit along the way so that we can open a subdivision in next, next year. So, that's, that's really what we're, we're looking for. So, we don't need all of the allocations. From what I understand, we only need one to continue the application process, to get everything submitted, and then we would come back again in September to ask for the, the difference to what we plan on building next year as part of our request once we've gotten through the entitlement process. So, you would have, before you, in the September timeframe, our subdivision as a holistic submittal at that point. So, you'd have that there. So, yeah. I don't know if you have any questions for me as a developer. We're San Joaquin Valley Homes. We built the subdivision on the south side of Kingsburg a couple of years ago, so we've been?
I have a question about that. How long have you been working on this current project?
Since January of last year.
So, I guess my question is, why didn't you come for the allocations when they were available to everyone else? Why should we extend it?
Genuinely, it was a misunderstanding. In the previous project that we did, we didn't need allocations for that project because most of it existed in the county.
To Larry County.
Right. And so, our application process this time around, there was a chicken and an egg kind of confusion on our part where we thought that we would ask for allocations after we have a project approved, but from what we understand, we need the allocations before we can get a project approved. So, there was kind of a, like I said, kind of a, we, we've built here before, but we didn't have to go through this process last time. So, we were kind of taken, thrown off a little bit by, by the order of operations here. That's genuinely what happened, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, are you, if we open the allocations, you'd be asking for one allocation, or you'd be asking for the 11 allocations?
From what I understand, all we need is one to continue processing our application.
Can we get some clarification from the city manager on that?
Please.
Mr. Peters, yeah, that's, that's incorrect. So, the way that the growth management ordinance works is you can ask for as many allocations as you need, but if you amend that at the time that you get to the final map, it can only go down. So, I think what you'd be asking for is a total number based upon how far you've gotten your map to, and then it would be, that's over 11. And so, the council could, I mean, let's just say that they opened the, the second round this evening. You could ask for, you know, 90, and then they could, they would have to then consider whether or not they would phase that into a future year, right? So, they could, you know, so let's just say 11 in 2025, and then, you know, 80 or whatever, you know, 79 in 2026.
So, if I ask for 90 now, and I only got one, that one rolls into the?
So, I mean, you could get the one, but I don't, you know, just frank, you know, being honest, it's not gonna help you because I think from what you guys need, just based upon our conversations about trying to get a map approved, right? So, I can't, the Planning Commission and the council are not gonna be able to consider a map with 90 units on it, for example, or any number over one if you get one allocation because you don't have, you know, you don't have the allocations to consider that.
So, I'm kind of confused then.
Yeah.
So, if I have to apply for 90, but there are only 80 available, and I can't get any more than 80, then what's the point of applying for 90?
So, there's, there's language in the growth management ordinance that allows the council to phase projects. So, if there are larger projects that developers know will come in over a certain number of years. So, there's only 80, as Holly mentioned, in a single calendar year, but, you know, at practice here, it's generally been if they've been phased, that's with an understanding that, you know, a developer is likely not going to build the full 80 in a calendar year.
Right. We wouldn't build 90 a year.
Exactly, right. So, but you're looking for an approval for, you know, whatever, you know, and every project obviously is different, but, you know, if it was, you know, there's been times where one project said 60, you know, allocations, but maybe they got 30 in one year and 30 in a separate year, right? So, but there is specific language in the growth management ordinance that doesn't allow you to sort of do what you're talking about where it's, you get one allocation and then you can increase that, right? You know, so you can only go down from what you're, or you have to come back, excuse me, you have to come back and get council authority to go higher, right? So, even, even if you got 80 allocations, let's just say, and then you reworked your map because something changed, and you said, well, actually, we'd like to have 82 now. You know, staff doesn't have the ability to allow you to have 82. Council can give more than that. If you had 80 and then came back and said, well, something changed, and now we're only gonna build 78, we can, that's administrative, and you, because the number is going down, there's less of them. That's what is in the growth management ordinance. If that makes sense.
Yes. So, do, just for clarity, do I need, do I need allocations in order to process my entitlement documents?
If you want the Planning Commission and the council to take steps on a tentative map, you're gonna need allocations.
So, so I can't submit any of my applications for review with Planning Commission or with council until I have allocation?
I mean, I'll leave to Mike, the city attorney, to answer. I think you could do those things, but as Holly mentioned, it would all be at risk. So, you know, the, the Planning Commission couldn't give an approval, and the council couldn't give an approval, and we, you know, in general, as a staff, have not done that because we don't want to, we don't want to put either, either the Planning Commission or the council in a difficult position to be discussing a map that doesn't have allocations yet. So, you know, what, the way that the allocation process works is that it's, you know, it's competitive by nature. So, you know, if there's five applicants that apply for allocations within one of the periods, whether it's the first or the second round, staff has to rate those based upon, you know, the matrix that's in the growth management ordinance. And so, you know, you, it's just a risk on your part, but you cannot get, you know, approval for those entitlement documents until you have allocations.
Yeah, this is part of the confusion.
Understood. And I think that probably the remainder of your conversation, probably take offline. If you wanna meet with city manager or anybody from our development, I think they'd probably meet with you to hopefully clear, clear up more of your individual specific questions. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up. Could I please just state your name and whether or not you're a resident?
Del Benz, one of the property owners for the subdivision.
For which subdivision? The San Joaquin Valley Homes?
I'm a civil engineer also, and my understanding was, last meeting, we had site planning meeting, we was told that we not, we cannot apply for a tentative map till we have allocation to just proceed by the application. The final map will come probably next year. It won't take that long, but if we don't get the, one allocation, we, we just stop that, we're then here to process it. That's the key. Holly can tell?
I don't, I don't know if that stops the application, correct?
That's why we was told that we cannot file a final tentative map or stuff.
Come on, yeah, come on up to Mike, please.
Like, like we, like we've mentioned before, this is a competitive process, and we've been in discussions with this developer for, for many months now, on and off. They've been working diligently, I would say, to, to try to follow our process and, and to get questions answered, and they have some important questions to be answered before they're really ready to, to move forward with any submittal, even if they had allocations. But we've been pretty clear about the, about the, the process and the allocations, and they, and there was a, there was a deadline for last year, and I, I believe they, you know, they were definitely informed of it in writing. They did not submit, and now we're, you know, now we're here, and they would certainly be ready, you know, should they, I mean, they have to be competitive. There may be other applicants, but, you know, I, I have no reason to think they wouldn't be ready for our rating and ranking and then a consideration of allocations on the September 30th date.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one other clarification. So, just based upon the timelines, you know, even if the council were to open the second round of allocations, there's a set timeframe. The earliest that the Planning Commission would be considering it is in May, and the council would be considering it is in June. You know, whereas if you, you know, if they do not open it, you will be delayed by five or six, about six months. So, you know, considering that there will be an allocation process and at the end of September, which then gives staff October to, to consider them all, Planning Commission will hear it in November, and then ultimately make a recommendation that will come to council in December. So, just from a timing standpoint, that's the difference between the two.
Thank you. Do you have any other members of the public that would like to speak specifically to this topic? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a final council discussion on this topic. Members of council? I have a couple. The processes with the processes is my take on this. The time came and the time went. I personally am not really interested in reopening the allocations and making an exception. It doesn't seem like even if we made the exception, at least the current developer here is ready to move forward with a, whether that's due to confusion or what that is. So, I don't, I don't like the precedent of making the exception when the deadlines were clear. Again, I'm just, I'm just one member up here, but I'm, I'm comfortable not opening that up again until September.
I know from my, I'm sorry, go ahead, Laura.
Didn't we reopen it last year? I think we reopened a second and had no applicants.
I don't.
We reopened, I mean, there's not a, there's not a distinguished, we don't distinguish between different types of allocations, but the council reopened it because there was a multifamily project, which was the senior housing project that was ultimately approved, located north of Ace Hardware. So, it was a consideration of that.
But we opened it, and we had enough allocations at that point for the project.
For the multifamily, there was no submittal for single-family at that time, so, yeah, I don't recall how many there might, may or may not have been. I don't think there were any, actually, there weren't any single-family allocations that were open, that were available because all 80 had been given to the West Star Phase Five project for 2024. And so, it, I mean, ultimately, it was a reopening for a consideration of the multifamily project.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I'm in favor of their project, but I know I've been hearing a lot of, I've been hearing from my constituents about allocations and the number of homes here in Kingsburg. So, right now, I'm not in favor of opening a second round either. You know, I don't think it's gonna hurt them that much, you know, to wait a few more, a few extra months. It's not that, not that long. But I think it's a good project. You know, I've heard about it, and I know, I know where it's at. I think it'd be good for Kingsburg, but, but right now, because of what I, what I've heard from constituents, it's, I don't think it's a good idea. I think a lot of us council members have heard things about, you know, a lot of people talking to us about homes going up and too fast and stuff. So, anyways, yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of opening up right now myself either.
Well, this is the first I've heard of this project, so forgive me for not knowing more about it, but, you know, I concur with both Pro Tem Palmar and Mayor Purcell. I, I think that there's just, still seems to be a little bit of confusion that probably should get buttoned up, and that can happen between now and September, and then that would give us probably a little bit more information, and, and we could go forward then. But it doesn't look like I'm in favor of it, opening it up either until September, we get to September.
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. I think it'll be, you know, I think it's a good project, and I do hate to, you know, to delay the, you know, to delay the project, but it doesn't seem like, you know, that, that it's ready to move forward at this point anyways. So, I, I would agree to hold off.
I think if that's all the comments, I think we would, are you looking for motions to determine whether or not we're gonna reopen it? Is that, is that what actually we would? So, I entertain motions. It sounds like majority of councils are looking to not reopen, so if that's the case, someone would like to make a motion for that, we entertain it, or the other one, whichever way you guys wanna go.
I'll, I'll make the motion to not open up the second, the first round allocation. It's the first round allocation.
The second round.
Second round allocation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries to not reopen. Moving on to item 10, the Housing Element Update. Presentation by Community Development Director Holly Owen. Welcome back.
Good evening, mayor and city council and members of the community. Tonight, we have an update for our, our ongoing housing element situation. This, this presentation is informational in nature, just to give you, get you caught up on where we are at, and a little bit of history for those who haven't been following it. Kingsburg was part of the multi-jurisdictional housing element back in 2022. It was, it was with 13 other cities, and a housing element is a state-managed dated eight-year policy document. The overall purpose is to identify current and projected housing needs and show locations where housing can be built, and then set goals and policies and programs to help meet those goals. Every city's required housing element has those policies and programs that must be implemented, and there are time-specific implementation goals. For Kingsburg, the summary of the dates is as follows. It was reviewed by Planning Commission on May 9th, council on July 17th of 2024, and after adoption, the notice of adoption was sent to the State Housing and Community Development Department, which we call HCD, on July 18th, and they, in turn, sent us a letter, like they do all jurisdictions, a letter that says, you're in substantial compliance, and that was sent on September 16th of 2024. Part of that, requirements for certification is to then take action steps and then show that you've done that, and then that sort of closes that, that housing element process for the next eight years. And some cities are required to do updates and changes to their zoning ordinance to reflect current state law, which, which Kingsburg was required to do, and some cities, including Kingsburg, are required to increase the development potential for identified properties in order to accommodate their share of the housing needs, the regional housing needs assessment. This was the overlay zone that was considered at your, at your December 4th meeting. As a result, the city initiated an amendment to Title 17 in order to comply with those programs. We did adopt, the council adopted the relevant zone amendments, text amendments on that December 4th, 2024 meeting, but did not adopt the housing overlay zones that were also part of that requirement. Subsequently, they, they directed staff to work with HCD to examine alternative options. You had some options that you, were laid out to you, and you chose and gave? that you were laid out to you, and you chose and gave staff direction for that, and that was to examine alternative options to meet the the re-in-a-number, the regional housing needs, without the upzoning of those four identified overlay parcels. As such, staff worked with our on-call planning consultants, who've had a lot of experience with the housing elements, helped us out internally, and attached this report is a cover letter, along with four attachment, that identifies the work that was done since that meeting. The information was submitted to HCD on Wednesday, January twenty ninth. We've had some back and forth via sort of formal letter, an email with with HCD, and at this point, that's the summary is where where we are now. Well, the cover letter lists in detail the proposed changes. The intent is to show there's adequate realistic capacity on alternative sites that could provide enough capacity in that lower-income category that would negate the need for doing that re-zone of those four parcels. The ball, however, is in HCD's court at this time, unless Alex has heard anything recent, and we are awaiting their response. Staff will be available to answer any questions council may have and to receive any direction. Thank you. This concludes my update.
Any council discussion? Questions? Okay, we'll open it up for a public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we will move it back to council for any final words or thoughts, questions?
I guess a waiting game right now.
Okay, so this is informational only, so we will move on to item eleven, the Kingsburg Healthcare District Grant Cycle Announcement. Staff report by Community Services Director Adam Castlana. Welcome, Adam.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's nice to see you guys up there. Today, I wanted to bring up to you the Kingsburg Healthcare Grant Cycle for 2025. Like every year, at the beginning of every year, the Kingsburg Healthcare District provides grants to various public and private organizations that provide health-related services to the Kingsburg community and surrounding area. Grants are awarded for the purpose, any purpose allowed by state law, and essentially for the health and well-being, maintenance for good physical health for members of the Kingsburg community and surrounding areas. Each year in January, the grant cycle opens, gives organizations an opportunity to submit applications throughout the spring. Applications are due in, on May one, and then are reviewed in June by the healthcare district to proceed for for the upcoming year. City has partnered with the healthcare district over the last several years, and then the staff report concludes, includes a list of projects that that we've partnered with and completed throughout the year since 2017. Tonight, staff is just informing council of the upcoming grant cycle and seeking input on any potential projects that council or staff might have. We'll then take that information to with the department, other department heads, and compile a list of those projects, and then come back to you within the next month or so to present to you our final list for council to approve which applications they would like to see the city staff submit. So with that, that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions and take any input that you might have.
Awesome, thank you. Council discussion? Questions? None? Is there any members from the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for any final closing words.
You have a question for Adam. Adam, have, have you had anybody talk to you about any proposals for for this grant?
So the Community Services Commission meets semi-regularly, and they they are, there is a list of projects that they're currently considering, but no one directly from the public. I know there's been been talk about potential upgrades to Memorial Park. Obviously, we're working on the Dog Park Project, which has a grand opening coming up in a couple months, and then, of course, the phase projects for Athol Park, right? That was done in phases, and so I believe there are a couple final phases that are still left. But as far as I know, there's no actual project list just yet, so.
So Community Development hasn't, doesn't have a list yet?
Not not quite. They're composing a list, and then when we get one from them, then we'll present it to council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, I don't, I don't think we need to do anything with this one, and we'll we'll hear back from you.
No, this is just a introduction, and if there are items that the council has or the public has, just to reach out to Adam or a member of staff, just to put that for council consideration later.
Awesome. Thank you. And go ahead and step here, we'll move on to item twelve. Item twelve is the Park and Recreation Master Plan Project Proposal. Staff report by Community Services Director Adam Castlana.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so this one is a capital improvement project that we worked on this previous year or for this coming upcoming year. City of Kingsburg proposes a development, a development of a comprehensive parks and recreation master plan to enhance the recreational opportunities and align the best practices for city park systems. The plan will address community needs, pri- prioritizing funding, and establish strategic goals to ensure equitable access, user satisfaction, safety, and broader city benefits. We will be working with the Sustainable Park and Recreation Community Initiative with Fresno State under the direction of Dr. Sam Langford, Professor. Dr. Langford's Park and Recreation Experience will guide the development of this project. For the City of Kingsburg, it proposes thirty, thirty-three thousand dollar budget total for this project. Staff is seeking approval from council to proceed with the proposed methods, timelines, and budget found in the staff report that was provided by Fresno State and Dr. Langford. The master plan update has funding via the fiscal year twenty-five budget as part of the city's overall capital improvement plan. Project completion is scheduled to be for November two thousand twenty-five. This project has already gone through the Community Services Commission. They have met with Dr. Langford about the process of how this is gonna look, how it's going to work out. Just a brief synopsis of, I guess, how the Parks Master Plan will come together. A lot of the bulk is going to be outreach to the community and the residents on what they'd like to see for parks and recreation, leisure services that the city provides, and update us essentially on what the Parks Department will look like and what our park assets will look like within the next ten years or so. So it's vital for every community to have an updated master plan. The City of Kingsburg has one that, I believe, the last one that was updated was two thousand and two. So it's been a while. That's the one that we're currently working on, but it gives an opportunity to kind of assess what we're lacking in the department in terms of recreation services and green space for our residents, and then be able to kind of go forward with an all-inclusive plan on how we'd like to address that and and go forward. So but the biggest push is going to be the community outreach, surveying the community, sending out mailers, getting their input on on the patterns they're currently using or they currently have when it comes to city programs and services. And then with that, we can potentially put something together and and hopefully present it to council by November, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel question? Counsel member, so.
I I have a couple of questions, Adam. Has the city done this master plan before, or is this new?
New, new from my, from my tenure here, but I believe the last one that was done was in two thousand and two.
Okay, and so having Fresno State do it, I think that's a good thing, because they're local, right? But I like that they're, you know, in the valley here, and they understand, I'm guessing, Kingsburg and our region very, very well.
So Fresno State has a Recreation and Leisures Department, and they have a degree that falls under that, 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 that scope. Dr. Langford's been there for quite some time in experience in Parks Master, in city planning. He's a colleague of Holly Owens, and so they've worked together on projects, and so I I believe that that program has what it needs to to see the Kingsburg gets a successful master plan at the end of the project.
Okay, very good. So to expand upon that, I don't know if I saw in the packet, like, references of what cities they've worked with or who they've worked with before. Do we know that?
We do. So they're currently working with the, they just finished working with the City of Bakersfield and Kerman.
Okay.
Those are the last two that he was working on, and we met with him last Wednesday. I know they, he did one for the City of Singer a couple years ago. He does have a reference list, just that we've been able to go through and work to see what their experience is, but I mean, those are his current projects.
Okay. Has anybody reached out to those references and said, yeah, how was the project? How did it turn out? Was it good? Was it?
Yeah, so California Parks and Recreation Society is a, is a society that we partner with or we have a a membership with, that I work with those directors on a regular basis. And so being able to reach out with them on on a one-to-one to kind of see how the process went. And all positive, and I, like I said, I think I have, he has the, he has my confidence in in completing this project.
Okay, thank you. One last thing. So me being here the first time, I enjoyed going through the the strategic plan, and one of the things that I enjoyed about what the city did with the strategic plan was they incorporated the community. They had several public sessions that community members could give their input. And this, in my mind, is similar to that, right? There's gonna be several public engagement sessions that the public will give their input.
Yes, so there will be in-person workshops that we will schedule throughout, and there is a subcommittee that will be created headed by the Community Services Commission, but we were given direction by Dr. Langford to go ahead and get an organization's list out so they can reach out to all organizations that Kingsburg might deem appropriate to kind of sit on, sit in on this group. So he'd like to hear from service members, or service groups, he'd like to hear from the schools, he'd like to hear from whoever we think would would fit, and I think we'd like to follow the same, same path that we did with the strategic plans.
Very good.
Opening up to all of them.
Thank you, Adam.
Any questions?
You have a question? The, Adam, on this forum, a community service subcommittee?
Yes.
So is that what you're talking about, the subcommittee would be?
Yes, it'd be like a steering committee for the project, obviously overseen by the Community Services Commission. I believe they have three members currently that are that are interested in heading that project, but then they would also consist of other members from the community that that sit on that project as well.
So, yeah, so you'll reach out to, like, the soccer leagues? Little League softball?
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely those that utilize the green spaces is a main push, other than service groups and service clubs, but yes, it would be a seeking, a representative from each group, if not to sit on the steering committee, then to at least make one of the workshops, to give input to to represent their group.
Okay. And then the fund, the thirty-three thousand, that covers all the mailers and and everything? And I think I read that in the agenda.
Yeah, and the staff report means his attached, his attached proposal, but that will cover his scope of staff and whatever he needs to get the project done, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is great. It'll be great to have it updated, to get the input from the community. I mean, yeah, I think, I think it's, and working with Fresno State, working with somebody local, yeah, I think it's, I think it would be a, a good project for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I think it's great. My only question's about the, the funding. I see this is coming out of Budget Line Thirty-Six. This is, this is ARPA money that we'd already predetermined for this as part of the strategic plan? Is that what this is falling under?
So this was part of the Capital Improvement Project as part of the budget that was approved for year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and ARPA was designated. I think we had, I know there was some conversation at that time about what we would be using ARPA dollars for, because there's a couple of projects in the Capital Improvement Project this year, and this was one of them. And this is a little less than, I think, I think thirty-five thousand was authorized in the CIP.
I just want, when we talk about the recommendations for council, we're talking about moving forward with the methods, timeline, and budgeting, but do we really need to do much with the budget, or you just want it all encompassing for the entire thing on the recommendations when we go to motion?
For this? So you've already approved the funding as part of the CIP for the budget, so this is your approval of the actual agreement?
Okay, yeah. Any questions? Do we have any public comments on this? Any final council comments or motions? The motion would be for the approval of the methods, timeline, budgeting contract for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, reviewed and approved by the city attorney.
I'll make that motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to item thirteen, our Code Enforcement Update, presentation by our building official, A.J. O'Connell. Welcome, A.J.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A.J. O'Connell, building official. It is my pleasure to present to you the code enforcement update for the last six months of calendar year twenty twenty-four. As has become our bi-annual practice, city staff is providing this update to the council on the efforts and activities of code enforcement officers, the data regarding the number and types of cases generated, and to relay observations from the field by our inspectors. In the last two quarters of calendar year twenty twenty-four, code enforcement staff continued our robust and active effort within the Kingsburg community. Through both proactive and reactive collaborations with property owners, tenants, business owners, and concerned citizens, our code officers are a sustaining, dynamic presence within our city. Before diving into the numbers contained within your staff report, I must lead off with a sincere measure of gratitude to the community of Kingsburg. One year ago, I presented to this council an in-depth analysis of our code enforcement philosophy of broken windows and our process of prevention, intervention, and resolution. Our neighbors recognize the importance of these edicts. It makes our job as code enforcement officers that much easier when we can work directly with our community members to address property maintenance issues early on because of their support for this cause. And for this, I thank the community of Kingsburg. My presentation tonight will be primarily based on comparing data from Q three, Q four, twenty twenty-four to Q three, Q four, twenty twenty-three. While there are some extenuating factors to consider when analyzing the data, this comparison-based model does give the reviewer an adequate means to determine the effectiveness of code enforcement efforts. Four hundred and eighteen separate code cases were generated in twenty twenty-four, which is a nine percent increase from the same period in twenty twenty-three. Of those cases generated, code enforcement staff engendered seventy-nine percent of them through proactive inspections in the community. In twenty twenty-three, this was a fifty-six percent. This jump in proactive cases is indicative of the active efforts of our code officers out in the community and working with property owners to obtain compliance with our codes and standards. Twenty twenty-four did see an overall drop in the percentage of reactive or complaint-based cases generated. The overall gross number of reactive cases were roughly half the amount that they were in twenty twenty-three. More than twenty-five percent of the cases generated were related to water usage violations. The number of cases in this classification saw a one hundred and fourteen percent increase from year to year. This seemingly staggering number can be attributed to a more direct charge of enforcement from management on this issue than in previous years, in addition to more comprehensive record-keeping. The second-highest case generation is related to general property maintenance at roughly one-fifth of the cases in twenty twenty-four. An example of this property maintenance classification can be seen on page eight of your attached data, data and pictures in your packet. Go down, keep going. Should be on one page. There you go. This structure that's in this, that's in this picture was initially deemed as unsafe to occupy, and then upon the inspection of the premises by code enforcement staff, it was observed that excessive trash and rubbish was strewn about the property. The property owner was cited for not only the unsafe structure, but also for this trash, both of which were listed as violations of the Property Maintenance Code. It should be noted that this particular case here was generated through a community member, alerting our code enforcement office and staff to the conditions on this property. Eighty-six percent of the cases in twenty twenty-four resulted in a final disposition of a courtesy notice being issued by code officers. This type of notice is intended to educate property owners of violations. It is not an order or a citation, but rather a tool to obtain voluntary compliance. Notices of violation or formal declarations of a public nuisance represent a just shy of eight percent of the case dispositions. This percentage also represents the number of administrative citations issued for violations, with a total amount being assessed of five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I do want to note that the amount that was assessed was not collected due to the offending properties coming into compliance voluntarily through cooperative efforts with city staff. Rather than city staff pursuing an aggressive collection tactic, we work directly with our property owners. It is the intention to use the issuance of administrative citations to encourage property owners to bring their properties into compliance voluntarily and not as a funding mechanism. This data that I have been describing can only be initiated through onsite inspections by our code officers. This includes initial This includes initial posting and follow-up inspections. Working together, our part-time neighborhood improvement officer and I conducted a total of 884 site inspections in 2024. In 2023, this number was 1,003. While describing the field inspection efforts of the code enforcement staff, it is important to recognize the immense teamwork and support given by other city divisions. This past November, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, Kingsburg Police, and Kingsburg Fire Department, code enforcement staff executed an inspection warrant for a code-deficient residential property within the city. With the support of these other divisions, code enforcement staff identified more than a dozen violations of our property maintenance, building, and zoning codes. These violations not only presented health and safety issues for the subject property itself, but also represented a public nuisance for the community at large. And I want to personally thank our partners for their partnership and commitment to keeping our city safe. In closing, of the cases that were generated in Q3, Q4, 2024, a whopping 95% of them have already been closed. I've highlighted this statistic, however, this should come as no surprise to the mayor and city council. Related to my earlier comments, this is a direct correlation, in my opinion, to the embrace of property maintenance ideals by our neighbors. We all want our city to remain clean, safe, and inviting for all. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council discussion, questions?
A.J., of those enforcement efforts, how many times would you say with the police involved? Did you have to get the PD involved to make sure that these enforcements get taken care of, or please?
We use our police department more as a support for our inspection staff if we feel that there is a safety issue with staff going to a particular property. But generally speaking, we don't need to have police department essentially act as an enforcement arm for property maintenance code issues.
Okay, so I mean, I think that's a good thing. I think that you're able, if you're able to professionally get your point across with city ordinances and educate people as to what it is, because sometimes I don't even know what the violation is sometimes when, you know, it's out there. And so I think that it's good that the police don't have to get involved, and people just go, oh, I didn't know about that, or we'll take care of it. And I think that's a positive, that the code enforcement team is out there and doing the good work. So I know it's probably not always fun, but I do appreciate it. So thank you, and thank you to the whole team. Thank you.
I have a question. When you come across someone that you're enforcing our codes with, and you come across a need, or maybe they financially or physically can't fix it within the timeframe, do we have it within the staff or the community? Do you have resources to direct them to, to help them become compliant so then they're not also getting a fine on top of the situation?
I can just tell you, from an internal policy, we're very, very accommodating of individuals' financial needs and financial situations. Unless it is an extreme blight situation, we want to work with our property owners, and we want to work with our tenants to bring them into compliance. Nobody wins when code enforcement is a heavy hand. We want to see voluntary compliance. It doesn't do us any good to be the heavy hand, as I said. That being the case, our part-time enforcement officer, Dana Rager, he has, I believe it's a weekly or a bi-weekly meeting with a task force that does try and identify, like, grant opportunities to be able to assist low-income families, low-income families, low-income individuals in basic property maintenance upgrades. We've also had very good conversations with, I just only know them by the acronym, it's like the Fresno County Housing, they're a nonprofit that operates around the county, and they specifically focus on the rural areas in helping low-income homeowners make certain upgrades onto their homes that could be classified as maintenance issues. They focus primarily on like upgrades for, within single-family residences for accessibility, building ramps and putting in grab bars in bathrooms. But, you know, they also do recognize that, you know, especially if we have an older population, they may not need to have a ramp built. They may just need to have their lawn mowed. They may just need to have their car registered. And they have those resources, they have those case managers that are able to assist them. Additionally, we have very, very good, we have very good communication and very good relationships with Fresno County Adult Protective Services. So sometimes, you know, we do have property owners that, yeah, they don't have the financial need, but they may not just recognize that you can't live with garbage all around your property. That's where APS can come in and help us. They have the skills, they have the train to be able to communicate with those very sensitive issues, especially if there are mental health issues that may be in play, to be able to essentially kind of act as more of an interpretation for us. We do have codes, and I think we are pretty good at communicating, but sometimes we have to understand our limitations, and that's why we have those resources available to us.
That's good to hear. Thank you for your hard work.
Do you have any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, do we have any other council discussion? A.J., I'm just going to tell you, I know you work a lot behind the scenes with this. You make the town safer in your way. I know that our fire department, our police, everybody sees them out there, and, you know, that's our frontline people, that's the big showcase. But you do a lot that people don't realize, and I appreciate that. I know a lot of times you're facing people that are not real happy with being told that they have to change stuff. You've figured out your way, and we appreciate that. I think that those things help keep the character of our town. You know, the little things that we deal with sometimes that are very important, they go unseen, you're fixing those things, you're correcting those things. We only notice it when it's broken, and a lot of times you've already taken care of it before it would even make it to us. So you do a lot. You do a lot that people don't see, and you do a lot with limited resources. So I know we only see you every six months or so, but I do want you to know that we very, very much appreciate you, and we appreciate your team and the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll close this. This is information only. Thanks again, A.J.
Thanks, A.J.
Next up is future agenda items. It says this will require a consensus for item 14. Do we do a presentation on that, or do we just ask for?
If you guys are good with consensus, we did include some supplemental material in the packet. It's not really a discussion item right now, so right now it's just a matter of if you want to make it a future item.
Okay, just for the record, this is a Swedish Festival Committee request for sponsorship. This is sponsored by councilmember Smith and for the Swedish Festival Committee member, Steve Separdan. So I guess we would just start out with asking if members of council would like to see this on the upcoming agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Yep?
Yes.
Sounds like it's a majority yes. Perfect. Okay, next up is our city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of reef items. Adam mentioned earlier the Dog Park Grand Opening that's slated for Saturday, April 12th right now, so they are finishing some minor, we call punch list items. And then the big item is just waiting, you know, for grass to grow. So April 12th. The Finance Committee is set to meet on Tuesday next week at 5:00 p.m., so February 11th. Bids did come back on the Golden State Boulevard Phase II project. That's a Measure C project. We've heard a few updates on before. Phase II is essentially paving out the gaps that they left at a lot of the intersections. So if you, you know, you notice those, like Stroud and Golden State. So that work will happen sometime this summer. We're still working on that. But Don Berry Construction, which is local to Kingsburg, won that bid for the entire project, so that's a good thing locally, and we have a lot of experience working with them. So we'll include more information once those dates are determined. We have to work around some of our festivals and things like that, so we'll know a little bit more later. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. I will now move to council member reports and council committee reports, starting with councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor Purcell. Economic Development Committee has not met, nor has the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control. The SKGSA did meet on January 22nd. What we discussed was the changes, the proposed changes to the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. There were several agencies that made plans to meet the state guidelines for the GSP. And so we, the board approved those formality-type changes, and so that went forward. And other than that, there was nothing else to discuss, so that meeting adjourned. And then the Kingsburg Healthcare District, as I mentioned last meeting, their meeting was postponed due to not having a quorum, and so hopefully they will meet. I'm hoping they're going to meet next week, although I don't have the official date and time yet, but we're hoping they meet next week. So other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember North?
Have a couple items. Bid, they discussed, they updated their website. They also talked about members of the Business Improvement District, the different businesses asking about moving their meeting times, so they're talking about that. And they're sending out a survey to all of their bed members. Chamber of Commerce, we meet next week. Center Point, we met a week, a week and a half ago, and we met in Parlier, and that is a quarterly meeting. One resource that they shared, and they said that they would also be willing to come to a council meeting if we would like, I'm going to ask, I already talked to Alex about putting it in the carrier and maybe Abby sending it out. They shared a resource for free legal help for our businesses. And I don't know if you recall me telling you that I talked with the EOC when the chamber was going through some difficult times. And they actually linked them up with the free legal help from lawyers, and so thought that would be a good thing to send out to our businesses, maybe through bid, let the chamber know also. It can be things that are just like setting up LLC or if there is legal trouble. So it's nice to know that resource is out there. I think that's it for those. I just also wanted just to say thank you to our police and first responders. A week and a half ago, we had a devastating tragedy in our town, and I know that the way it was handled so swiftly that it allowed a family to say goodbye to a member, and that is because of quick thinking of your staff. And my thoughts and prayers are with them for everything that they had to deal with in such a difficult situation that really hit home for a lot of us.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, the Community Services Commission meeting was last week or two weeks ago, and we discussed the Parks Master Plan that came before us today and the Dog Park Ribbon Cutting that's going to be on, as Alex mentioned, on March 15th at 10 o'clock. April 15th at 10 o'clock? April 12th, okay, sorry. The Finance Committee met last week, and we discussed the Space Needs Assessment, so that'll be coming before us. Recently, I attended the Chamber Mixer that was held at Gold Standard Mortgage, and that was very nice. It was nice to see that building open. And I attended an open house for a new CPA firm in town, Alvarado Bennett. So two friends of mine, so I'd like to congratulate them, and I'm glad they were able to open up in town. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Palomar?
Public Safety, we are scheduled to meet next week on the 11th. Planning Commission, we're scheduled to meet on February 13th. SKF, we're scheduled to meet on the 19th. So I got a busy week next couple of weeks. And that's all I have. Last week, some of our council members went to Talarri and city manager to Alexandra Macedo's swearing-in, and that was a nice event. Talked to her dad, and there was, who else was there? Valadeau was there, yeah, I didn't talk to him, but there was some people there, you know, it was a nice swearing-in, and I think she'll do a good job for our district here, District 33. Laura was there, Dave and Mayor Purcell, yeah, so it was a good event. We had fun. Alex. And if anybody wants to see some good wrestling, Kingsburg, our league tournament is Friday in Reedley. So I encourage people to go. It's during the day. Wrestling starts at 10, it'll go till about 3, 3:30, 4 o'clock. That's all I have.
Thank you. For FCR TA, they're going to move, they are moving forward with the microgrid project here. It's going to be in downtown Kingsburg. It's going to be an exciting project. I think we'll have more information on that presented later. That'll be the, I believe that is the first one that they are doing in Fresno County. So that's exciting that they chose Kingsburg. It's obviously because we have the best downtown. And for the Council of Governments, I was selected to be the vice chair of the City Selection Committee for the next year. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. If we don't have anything else, I believe we're going to adjourn into closed session. Thank you.